Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the September 8th regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission. Sorry about the little delay. We think we've got all our technical challenges worked out. So let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any staff announcements or agenda changes this morning?
None, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Then, we will go ahead and open the general public comment portion of our meeting today, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any item within the subject purview of the commission but not on the agenda today. So, is there anyone online or in the audience who would like to speak to us today? Annette?
Everyone online is for the agenda item.
Great, thank you. Then, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial and will be acted upon by the commission at one time without discussion unless there's an item that a member of the public or commission would like to pull from the agenda for further discussion. The agenda today just contains minutes from previous meetings. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull from the agenda?
No.
Nope. Okay. Then, we are open to a motion on the consent agenda.
I believe we adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. As to June 23rd, abstain as to the second one.
Thank you. Any opposed? None.
If I could break in. It's very helpful. I save the minutes individually in a folder. And when they're printed back-to-back so that we have the end of one minute on one side and the start of one minute on the next, it lapses up my filing system.
Okay. So, single-sided copy?
It doesn't need to be single-sided as long as the minutes of each reading are separated.
Got it. Thank you.
I appreciate the attempt to minimize the paper, but I understand. Okay, we will get started with our regular agenda. Item 1, 2021-055 zoning amendment for Whiskey Slide Farms LLC. And Gabriel, will you be introducing this item?
Yes, I will, Madam Chair. Good. Let me, I have a PowerPoint presentation as well, so I'm going to be sharing the screen once I get started.
Yes, please.
I'm just, I'm just gonna start.
You need to turn your mic on or zoom off, please.
Yes, I am muted. Turn the mic back on. Am I echo?
No.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chairmembers of the Planning Commission. This, kidding, I have muted this one.
Oh, you need to turn the sound off on your laptop computer so the master's sound as well.
Well, the laptop is muted.
Right, but you need to actually turn the sound off on the laptop. I don't know why, I just know you're not doing it.
Okay. Asha take care of it.
Yep.
Seems good.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This item before you is a zoning amendment for Whiskey Slide Farms LLC, which is located at 15150 Ponderosa Way. Actually, the applicant's address is 15150 Ponderosa Way in, um, County.
Can you guys hear us in the audience?
The request is to allow for three contiguous parcels to be combined, which they were, and rezoned from A1 to, I have a slide that I would like to share, the PowerPoint slide presentation I'd like to share with you. Share screen. I gotta get on. Annette, am I allowed to share my screen? I can't see that function to share the screen.
Yes, it's at the bottom.
Oh, there we go. Good. Yeah, I mean, my screen sharing has failed to start. The window you selected is invalid. Let me go to full screen here so we get the whole flavor of it.
So, if you go down here to the right, you can go to the green one. Yep, up.
So, zoning amendment 2021-55 for Whiskey Slide Farms. As I mentioned earlier, it is a zone amendment. And the subject parcels are located at 15369, 15499, and 15469 Jesus Maria Road in Magalomay The zoning designation is for three contiguous, three contiguous parcels which were merged, totaling 40.99 acres. And the zoning amendment is from residential agriculture, RA 20 to general agriculture, A120 to allow for cannabis cultivation. The map in front of you is an aerial view of the property. There'll be other maps that will actually be more definitive of where the property So, two of the original parcels, AP number is 162744 and 162745, are currently being developed for outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation under the Calaveras County Code 1795. One cultivation permit for one acre of canopy has been conditionally approved for, was conditionally approved for that use. So, the request today is a zoning amendment to co-locate a second cannabis cultivation site, as co-location is only permitted in the A1 zone with one permit allowed for 20 acres of land. Remember, we have 40 acres of land with the consolidation of the parcels. This graphic depicts where the existing grow area is. I don't know if visually you can actually see, but I think you have this particular graphic in your packages for the meeting. And this is where the existing canopy is. And from my understanding, the second cultivation would be adjacent to the existing cultivation site. And based on rules and regulations, the grow areas have to be set back at least 150 feet from any property line. And I think this satisfies that, that distance. Just a bit of comparison between an RA 20 and an A120. The RA 20 puts equal emphasis on residential and agricultural uses. And zone is designated to provide lands for small-scale and personal-scale farming and ranching, as well as for larger residential parcels. The A1 zone, on the other hand, the main resource production is, the main resource production zone is generally for farming and ranching practices, as the primary emphasis residential uses are placed in secondary position to commercial-scale production of food and fiber. Quite a few letters have been received. There are two letters from a law firm, one letter from an adjacent property owner, actually two adjacent property owners each have letters that we received in opposition to the project. The attorney's opposition letter focuses on SEQA as they challenged the staff's determination of a negative declaration. They are actually requesting that an EIR be filed. The opposition believes that EIR should analyze impacts of all potential land uses for the proposed zone. One letter claims that historical artifacts were removed from the site by the applicant. That statement is not supported by a letter received from a company called In Context. About 17 letters of support were received in favor of the project prior to the publishing of the staff report. More recently, opposition has focused on the spraying of pesticides on cannabis plants and the environmental health effects of that. The opposition email claims that revised resolutions reliance, remember, we had to revise Planning Commission resolution, that the resolutions reliance on the 2019 county program EIR is without support in the administrative record. Opposition also believes that the subject parcel did not exist at the time the 2019 EIR was completed and could not therefore have been analyzed with respect to the pending This is the location of the neighbors in opposition to the project. To the west is Craig and Sarah Catto. And to the south is Kyle and Ashley, they also own Kyle and Ashley Catto. And then, Cody and Kristen Cable also. And the area in blue is the boundaries for the Whiskey Slide project. This is just trying to correct something that is in the staff report when we made references to the Oak Ridge subdivision. I think that statement in the staff report is an leftover from a prior staff report that was used as a template. The Oak Ridge subdivision has no bearing on this project. The Oak Ridge subdivision is 7.2 miles away. So, a distance from the westerly property line to the nearest residential property to the west is 152 feet. Remember that the grow area itself is much, much further away. And the distance from the south of the property line to the nearest residential property to the south is about 50 feet, that the grow area is an additional five or six hundred feet away from that. The environmental determination is that, you know, the proposed, staff found that the proposed cannabis project requesting a rezon is within the scope of the program An addendum for Chapter 1795, which regulated commercial and non-commercial cannabis cultivation, and adopted by the Board on October 22 in 2019. Staff prepared an initial study of negative deck to address cannabis-related impacts that were not addressed in the EIR. County also provide, they prepared a negative deck to analyze potential impacts that could result from other non-cannabis uses permitted by the zoning designation. So, in that document that you do have, we actually not only looked at some of the impacts of a cannabis-related use, but also touched on some other non-cannabis-related use, which was actually going over and beyond what we were required to do. Some of the findings is that the project was processed to be consistent with the requirements of California Environment Quality Act, SEQA, Public Resource Code 21000, and pursuant to subsection C1 of SEQA Guidelines 15168. The proposed zoning amendment is a later activity within the scope of the programmatic EIR, an addendum certified by the county in 2019, and to approve the cannabis regulation program qualified as Chapter 17.95 of the Calaveras County Code. The proposed zoning amendment is consistent with land use map and all applicable policies of the county's general plan and the standards of the Calaveras County Zoning Code Title 17 for the general agriculture A1 zone. The proposed zoning amendment is consistent with neighboring and adjacent land uses and zoning. So, what are staff's recommendations? Recommendation number one is for staff, is for the Planning Commission to adopt negative deck 2021-055 for Whiskey Slide. The second is adoption of negative declaration, recommending adoption of the negative declaration to the Board of Supervisors. Recommendation number three is that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2020-2022-008, approving the zoning amendment from RA 20 residential agriculture 20 acre minimum to A120 general agriculture 20 acre minimum, and then to recommend the same to the Board of Supervisors. In the audience this morning is Mr. Doug Oliver, who is our chief building official and is also the director in charge of the cannabis department. He has recently conducted some site visits to the property. I think anybody on staff, from anybody on staff, he's the person that is most prepared with most, with the most current information on what is actually happening on the property. He would like to address what the issues dealing with spraying of pesticides on the property and other issues, because it is within his jurisdiction to do those things. This is the conclusion of my presentation. I thank you, and if you have any questions, hopefully I can answer them for you.
I have a number of questions, some of which perhaps Mr. Oliver could answer, some of which not. First question is, I understand that three parcels have already been merged, isn't that correct?
Yes, they have.
So, we don't have to decide anything about that?
No.
Okay. And one acre of cannabis has already been planted, is that right?
That's correct.
If you have that map, it's figure two in the staff report, could you put that up and point out to us where that's located on the map?
An aerial view.
The, yeah, okay. I'm opening back up the, the presentation here.
Need a new computer.
I know. It's, it's, well, there's cable work being done in the hallway. I don't know if that has any impact on what we are trying to do here, but I should just be able to quickly go back.
Well, if need be, we can work off the staff report, which the commissioners have.
Right.
It can be figure two on page two.
Now, I do have, luckily I have hard copies of, of some of the graphics I had displayed. So, you were looking for which one again? The one that shows distances to adjacent residentially zoned properties?
I think this, figure two.
Okay, aerial.
Figure two.
Yeah.
And the question is, where on figure two is it located? It looks like it's in the northeast corner.
It would be in the northeast corner. So, you know, the thing that looks like kind of a striped lines kind of going across there, not very visible, but that's exactly where that 162070544, 044, right in that general area is where the existing grow is.
Does it also extend to the, what used to be the parcel below, 45?
No, it doesn't extend to the parcel below.
It doesn't on the map, but does it in real life?
I don't think so. It doesn't show that on the map because, and I don't think it does extend to, to that area.
Okay, now, this, the existing grow was granted as a ministerial act since they had the right to grow an acre on the RA zone, right?
Yes.
This, this request is discretionary, isn't it? There's no right to this zoning change.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, the request today has nothing to do with the ability to actually grow. The request today is basically to change the zoning to allow that additional license to be applied for. And that license is not going to be granted until the zoning issue is resolved.
Okay. And the zoning, the request for a zoning amendment, which is what's before the commission.
Yes.
That calls for the exercise of discretion by the commission if it's not ministerial or else we wouldn't be here, right?
Absolutely, yes. And, and also, it has a second component, which is recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, because it's a, it's a land use issue separate from the ability to grow or not grow cannabis.
Now, where will the second cultivation site be? In the same area as the first one?
Yes, if I can, maybe now my computer is back. I can, I can share screen, so, it's gonna take me back to that dark page. Yeah, good. Now, that's where all the, I have to open this one. So, the, the second grow area would be adjacent to the existing grow area, because that's the pocket that's been designated for, for the cannabis grow. And Mr. Oliver can, you know, add to that in case of clarification.
You may not know the answer to this, but somebody might. In the, in the negative declaration.
Yes, sir.
Document, on page 10, there's a figure three, and it shows the site, and it shows what we believe to be the cultivation site. And then, south of the cultivation site, there's a series of little white circles. And I'm wondering what those are and if they have anything to do with this.
On page three of the negative deck, you said?
Page 10.
10.
So, figure three has a Google Earth image, and you can see what, like, who knows, because the scale could be off, but they look like B boxes or something. Who knows what they are?
Oh, yeah. I think those are, can you, do you know, what is?
Can I see a picture of that real quick?
Yeah.
Here.
Is that where the tanks and stuff are?
Okay, would appear that, that Google imagery was taken during, or just prior to placement of the three structures that are on that parcel right now. So, that, that location is the footprint location of the three metal buildings they currently have constructed on the parcel.
So, it would be really helpful if we could get that aerial view up and just point on it to where the improvements that are shown in figure three actually are.
Okay, let's go back.
So, just go stop, stop share.
Yes.
And then go back to the ground and then this part again.
And then this one, yeah. And hopefully it, it hurries up. Okay. So, is this the graphic you were referring to?
Yes.
Yes. So, in this particular graphic, you don't really see those three, those items that you saw on, on page 10 of the negative deck. And part of that is because the, we've been working on this project for quite a bit. And depending on the timeframe in which those images were captured, there would be certain things on the property that may not be on the property at this particular time. But.
But can we point to both the designated grow area and then where the improvements with the metal buildings are?
Okay. So, the designated, can you see that?
Yes.
Yeah, the designated grow area would be right about there at this particular time. And. and the adjacent, the, the new grow area, if approved, would be adjacent to it.
Basically, that grow area is going to increase towards the east.
So it would be kind of...
So currently, the, the existing grow site is about half of what you see there, as far as vertical lines from that roadway in the center, towards the east, about half of that is currently being cultivated on.
Okay, now, looking at this same Figure Two, there's, appears to be a structure on the parcel to the west.
Let me try to, with my...
Is that?
Where, where exactly is it? You can see my, that's my mouse.
It would be the west of the yellow line.
You're in there.
To your left.
Left, more, more.
All the way, the half.
Nope, go to the left. You were doing fine.
On the adjacent parcel.
Another parcel?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, that is, that is an existing property that is not part of the development, and I think they are the neighbors that are in opposition to the project. So this area here, and this house right there. So, but, this is the property line in yellow, this is the grow area right here, this is the westerly residential property. I think we made this distance to be about 150 feet, and we made this distance to be about 50 or 51 feet.
Okay, now, how far is it, how far is it from the closest, the westerly part of the cultivation site, which is actually being grown?
Yes.
To the residence?
Yes.
It's on the west parcel there, owned by...
I think, I do have the graphic for that, but I did not include it in this, but I think I did mention it in the staff report. When we measured this, if this distance is 150 feet, so this distance is probably about, maybe three, four, four, four or five times more, I think we measured it to be about 700 feet at the minimum.
Looking at what's to the south of the parcel, you pointed out, there's one just to the south of the southeast corner.
Yeah, are you talking about this property here?
And that's like 50 feet from the property line.
Fifty feet from the property line, and I think just, you know, looking at if there, where is this? So if this is 50 feet to the property line, the distance we're looking for would be from here to about there, and I think we figured that was probably some, I, I think 800 feet or so. It is in the staff report, I'm trying to look for that particular page, so I can, I can share that with you. Because I think that distance is critical. Regardless...
It says, "The nearest residence to the cultivation site is located approximately 300 feet to the west..."
Okay.
"...on a parcel which is 14 acres in size."
Right, so it's 300 feet to the west, and a little bit further to, from, to the south.
Yeah, I think it says 800 feet to...
Yes, I know, 800 feet shows up somewhere in the report.
But if, but if the anticipation is to change the zone, then at any point in the future, if they wanted to, they could then do whatever.
No, no.
Since Jessica Fowler, the Agricultural Commissioner, I just wanted to let you guys know that there is some chat in the chat box, I don't know if you guys can see that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to the chats.
The point of the question is, they could decide to move the cultivation site from where it is, anywhere they wanted to on that parcel, subject to the physical limitations of the site itself.
And the required clearances.
Because the whole thing's being resolved.
And the required clearances from a cultivation site to a residence.
150, no, well... It's 150 feet from the property line.
Yeah.
To the property line.
To the property line.
That 800 feet figures on page 10 of the staff report.
It appears that it's right, pretty close to, on the property line, on that far corner. If anybody was to build anything on their property adjacent to that, they would be affected adversely.
Give me into the, to the northeast.
Just above where the pond is there? Yeah, go up. If somebody was to build above that, because that's where the grow is right there.
Right, the grow...
They're certainly gonna be affected.
Yeah, the canopy is right here.
Anybody that, yes, where you're at, right there.
The applicant owns the adjacent parcel to the north.
Okay.
And there's some chats online, I'm gonna check what those, what those are about.
I guess then it becomes buyer beware.
Yeah, you can see it.
And the grow is 150 feet from the property line, at least, at least.
Okay, there's a, there's a letter of opposition from Cody and Kristen Cable.
Yes.
Who say they own parcel 16026046, south across Suez Maria, presumably the road of the project.
Yeah, that would be this one. And I had a, let me go through, I had a graphic that actually shows where, let me see if I can get to that, I had a graphic that shows where that property is in relation to... So this actually shows where the property is in relation to adjacent property. The cables are actually even further south of where the, the Cato's are. So that red mark, this is where the cables are, over here, and the Cato's are here and, and there.
Those red dots, though, are just on the property, not where the house is.
Right.
Right.
Well, it looks like you can see a house on, on 1626046, owned by the cables, right at the end of your arrow there, is that, is there a house there?
Yeah, I think that, that little thing with the, this is probably a house, yes.
So, do you know, do, do they live there?
I don't know if they live there or not, I just know that they have ownership, but Mr. Oliver has had a meeting with, with the Cato's, right, Doug?
Correct.
Okay, I got some questions about the winds in this area.
Okay.
The, the initial study slash negative declaration at page 17 says that, according to some wind models, northwesterly and northeasterly winds converge in this eastern area of McCallum Hill and become northerly winds. So if you're gonna have northerly winds, which the initial study and negative declaration seems to say there will be, then wouldn't it be the case that any odors from this cannabis grow will blow right down to the parcels owned by Kyle and Ashley Cato and Cody and Kristen Cable?
Hypothetically speaking, yes. I, I, in fact, odor, the odor is one of those overriding considerations that was used in the EIR for the cannabis ordinance itself. That was an overriding consideration, because there's really no way to mitigate the odor from cannabis, as there's no way to mitigate the odor coming out of a sewage treatment facility or a landfill, it's just one of those things. So when the Board of Supervisors looked at, you know, the impact of the, of the odor, based on wind direction, and they looked at the benefit of the project, a statement of overriding considerations was, was issued for that. So that really isn't, it, it's an issue that was considered, but cannot be mitigated.
Well, are you saying, are you saying that no, no matter how strong these odors will be, over what period of time, and how offensive they can be to the neighbors that this commission cannot consider that as a factor?
Not, yes, because it has already been considered as part of the EIR, with the understanding that there, there are gonna be specific parcels in the county that are gonna have cannabis permits issued to them.
I'm not sure I understand that. If we have discretion with respect to this zoning amendment, can we or can we not consider the impact of odors?
Because we are teeing off the Environmental Impact Report for the Cannabis Ordinance 1795, we cannot separate the issue of odor from the issue of the EIR. Because that has already been resolved.
Did the EIR consider the impact of co-location?
The EIR considered a lot of issues. I am not familiar with every specific issue considered in the EIR, but I think the EIR would have considered multiple locations, not only co-location, but even cannabis locations that may be adjacent to each other, for that matter. So, in, in retrospect, I think the EIR considered those kinds of factors.
Is it, back to the winds, is it, is it true in this area that you can have easterly winds, and you can have westerly winds, and they somewhat tend to vary depending upon the time of day?
Mr. Commissioner, I am unfortunately not an expert on wind directions, but one would assume that there will be directions, directional changes in the way the wind blows from time to time.
I think the description is talking about that there's ravines, so, you know, it changes throughout the day with the temperatures, up and down. On the canyon I live on, that happens.
Mine too. You never know where it's coming from.
Well, if you had winds, westerly winds, they're gonna blow this odor right towards the Craig and Sarah Cato's, correct?
Yeah, possibly.
Now, the, the, the Environmental Impact Report, it's at page 3.2-22, says, "The potential for odors to be perceived and considered objectional will depend on the size of the cannabis operation, atmospheric conditions, and other things." And it also reports that generally, the larger the size of the canopy area, the greater the potential for odor to be evident to off-site receptors. That's at page 3.2-22, and it makes perfect sense. Is it fair to say that doubling the size of this canopy area, from one acre to two, will likely substantially increase, like double, the potential for odors?
It, it, it probably would, but, you know, to what extent, what, I mean, there, there are two ways to approach this. If, in final analysis, all things considered, the, the, the issue of odor is not an, is not an issue that could have, could have been mitigated, or could be mitigated at the time the EIR was approved, then any discussions about odor is just emblematic of what we knew at that particular time. So, it is one of those considerations that is there, but there's really no way to mitigate it, so there was a statement of overriding mitigation for odor at, at that particular time. Now, logically speaking, one could say that, well, if you have a, a combination of several grows on the same parcel, in, in, in this case, in the county, the cannabis ordinance would have some limitations as to, you know, how many uses can be co-located, and that is the reason why it is based on acreage. So that is why, to get the second, so consideration has been given. So to get a second grow area, there has to be a minimum of several acres, in this particular case. For this to actually happen, there has to be 40 acres of land. So consideration has been given for any potential impact from odor, and, and, and that's the reason why we're not concentrating multiple cannabis grows on small parcels. So that's another way to look at what your concern is. So I'm not saying that there is no discernible concern regarding odor, but at the same time, the, the ordinance has been designed in such a way that tries to protect, you know, adjacent property owners from that, from that effect by making the parcel on which you could actually have co-locations much, much bigger than if you only had one grow.
And I might point out that the cannabis ordinance, too, has a special distance from the grow to the property line.
Right.
To compensate for...
To compensate for that.
It's definitely not sufficient, however.
That's 150.
I actually wanna comment on that, because in one place here, the, the section that I read just a moment ago, that said that there was a 14-acre parcel to the west, and it was within 300 feet, and yet, in the negative deck, it says that the closest residence is 400 feet to the north, and is owned by the applicant, and that the next closest is 800 feet to the west.
Right.
It also says that there is no parcel that is smaller than 20 acres adjacent to this parcel, but you just said back here that it was a 14-acre parcel. So I think we're just really confused by not having specific numbers.
Right.
In order to judge the impact of the odors on the neighbors.
Yeah, the only thing I can say there is, we do have the Figure Two, the map where we can see it, and make some judgment.
Right.
How far it is. Is it true, is it true, Mr. Elliott, that when the EIR was prepared, the draft ordinance at that time that was being considered, at that time, the maximum canopy allowed was one-half acre?
Mr. Commissioner, I was not a part of the deliberations regarding that EIR and, and what the, what the draft ordinances were. I don't know if Mr. Oliver, were, were you in charge of cannabis at that time, Doug?
No, he was.
Okay, he wasn't a part of the, but I, but I think...
I don't, I don't remember.
Right, and so, so I don't really under, I don't really have any knowledge of, now, you were, were you on the planning commission at the time?
Yes.
And were you a part of that deliberation?
You have knowledge, though.
You do?
Many, many more parcels that were eligible, and smaller parcels, so they...
But it was a half an acre max, and Mr. Potnick is correct, they estimated 750 grows would be coming into the county.
Right.
But if the one-half acre is, is correct, and I think it is, that the EIR analyzed, when we get down to specific locations.
Yes.
What's, what's being asked for here would be a grow that is four times the size of what the EIR considered. That's the math.
On a much larger parcel, separated...
On a 40, on a 40 acre, so four times on a 40-acre parcel, so it's one, one grow per, per acre, so the grow area is an acre in size, and the parcel in question is 40 acres, so two grow areas, two acres for a parcel of land that is 40 acres. So that's 20 times more. So the, the parcel size is 20 times bigger than the grow area.
So they, with their current zoning, as long as they could maintain the required clearances to the adjacent RR parcels, they could already have two acres of grow area. When they merge them, that's not changing, it's just that they can locate them immediately adjacent to each other.
And the idea is, is for co-location, so it's not to have a separate grow area, it's just to have them within the same vicinity, proximity, one adjacent to the other. Concentrate the grow area in one area, rather than having two separate grow areas, because I think also that has to do with the logistics of actually setting up a grow area. There's a lot of infrastructure that goes into it for sprinkling and things that... for sprinkling and things of that nature, building canopies. So, it's actually more economical to have those things closer together than to have them spread all over the property.
Well, let me make sure I understand this. You had to have a minimum parcel size of 20 acres in the RA zone for a grow, is that right? Now, before they merged these parcels, none of those was 20 acres.
There are two parcels that were existing parcels at the time. I can give you the...
There were three.
There were three.
There were three.
And none was 20 acres.
Well, no, not of the three. Well, maybe the one was. I thought I heard something...
I thought that the larger parcel, I thought, was 20 acres.
Okay, so two of the original parcels, which were 16...
Yeah, one was 22.
162744 and 162745 are actually over, both of those parcels are actually over 20 acres.
But they weren't growing on those parcels, right?
No.
And the reason why, I thought I read was something about the terrain didn't make it possible to do it.
Well, 044 is where they had the existing grow.
Right, exactly.
So, before the merger, they had one parcel of 22 acres they could have grown on.
Actually...
With a limit of the one acre.
Yes.
After they merged, they have over 40, so now they can, eligible for two.
Yes.
It was 5.72, 12.25, and 22.6.
Okay, looking at the traffic situation, the staff report says the access is from the south via an easement that takes access from Jesus Maria Road. And it says that road is a county-maintained road of hilly terrain with no pedestrian or bicycle paths and no public transit. Is it also true that this road, at least for the most part, is narrow and has a lot of curves?
Mr. Commissioner, I haven't been on that road, but I think Mr. Oliver has.
And I think there'd be clarification.
And in some areas, it's one lane.
But that access from the south, isn't there access from the north?
Yes.
And is there necessarily a use of an easement in order to get to this property?
Right, from what I know is the staff report says the access is from the south.
Well, it says legal access to the existing cultivation site from the south. It could be illegal access from the north, and that's my question.
There's nothing in the report.
So, yeah, that was my question also. I was trying to locate Live Oak Road on this...
On the map itself.
Yeah, so I wonder if you can point to Live Oak Road.
I think that's a part of the appendages that were left over from a previous request. If Live Oak Road is the name of the road that was near Sheep Ranch.
Okay, well, that's why.
Right.
So, I think that's, so this access easement from the south may also be a part of that. So, we need to know where the access is. And I believe you have an answer to that.
Yeah.
Well, they show Ponderosa Way and then a driveway coming off.
Maybe we have an answer.
Yes.
Can you tell us?
Right, so the primary access is through an easement that is to the south, the connect direct to the Haces Maria Road. There is a secondary access that is to the north that loops around and intersects the Ponderosa Turnoff that's slightly further to the east. Our cannabis permit approval is based on that access from the south.
And who owns the easement? Who's granted the easement with it?
The easement is through, I believe, you know what? I don't have that paperwork in front of me, but it is directly through the south to Haces Maria, and so it is through the Cados property, I believe. That easement is for access.
Now, I know there are portions of Haces Maria Road that are actually maintained by the county. So, if any easements would be granted, it would be probably the county granting the use of that road. Now, the ownership of the parcel on which the property, on which the road is, is at this time, is, I think it's the, I think it's the Bureau of Land Management that owns portions, not the entire part of Haces Maria Road, but there's a portion of it that is actually owned by the BLM. However, the county maintains that roadway within that portion.
I think what we're trying to get to is, is there easement crossing one of the adjacent property owners?
Oh, yes. Good question. The, I got into the attorney representing the applicant. All the easements are on parcels owned by Whiskey Slide. That's the information I was given, so...
I don't think that's what we're hearing from...
Yeah, that doesn't seem to match up with what Doug described.
Yeah, we required them to establish legal access for the construction of all of the structures on both properties to the north, including the single-family dwelling. It's on the parcel above the grow site. So, there is an access to the Cados property. It is legal access for driveway access, essentially. It's not specified as to whether it's commercial or private, like for residential use. It just says it's a driveway access easement.
And that is the easement that they would be using as they grow this bigger?
Correct. Based on the application, that would be the...
Through their property?
Correct.
Okay.
I think on figure two in the staff report, right, there's clearly a driveway directly coming up from the south.
Could they also get access to that easement on Whiskey Slide Road if they come from Mountain Ranch?
I can't answer that question, sir, I don't know.
Okay, if you start at Mountain Ranch, you want to get to their grow site. You'd take Whiskey Slide Road, wouldn't you?
You can, but you're intersecting Haces Maria, yes.
So, they can get there either way.
Now, this is on the other side of Haces Maria. The Ponderosa goes off of Haces Maria, somewhat opposite of Whiskey Slide.
Well, I'm trying to get at, they have two different ways to get to their grow from...
I'm sorry.
From, they can get there from Mountain Ranch or they can get there from Moke Hill.
I need to clarify, because you're correct. There is a Ponderosa road that comes off of Whiskey Slide further south of Haces Maria. There's also another access on Haces Maria that is a three-way intersection that is labeled Ponderosa. It is not, that's not a contiguous road all the way through that location. So, Ponderosa stops beyond Whiskey Slide, and then there's another portion called Ponderosa off of Haces Maria that is unconnected.
They have little chunks of Ponderosa all over the county.
But if you're traveling from Mountain Ranch on Whiskey Slide Road towards your grow, it's also the case that that's hilly and narrow and has a lot of curves, doesn't it?
That's correct.
So, should we, do you have another question?
I can, I have a few more than...
Okay.
Okay. The letter from the council for the Cados Burton and Swett says that the EIR, an addendum, did not contemplate a rezoning or a series of rezonings such as this. Is that correct?
Mr. Commissioner, I'm going to defer that question to county council.
I don't, I didn't see anything in the EIR that specifically talked about rezones, but the ordinance that was studied in the EIR in its express language did talk about rezones. And I just also wanted to clarify, there was a lot of discussion about what happens with significant and overriding considerations. And just for 15168 tiering, the issue is whether the new approval will significantly worsen any of the significant and unavoidable impacts that were studied in the EIR. That is, the EIR is a county-wide EIR, not a site-specific EIR. So, the question would be whether doing, adding these additional, the additional odor would be a substantial increase over the entire project area of the EIR. So, now, that doesn't, I mean, again, it's a zoning amendment. It's not that you're not allowed to consider factors with respect to policy considerations for a zoning amendment, but for SEQA, the standard is whether it's substantially greater than what was analyzed in the EIR, and that was a county-wide project.
So, then we can consider it in this?
I think that the way you consider it might be different for SEQA versus as a policy consideration for a zoning amendment. That's my opinion of how SEQA works with this.
Well, the ordinance did provide that applicants can apply for compatible zoning designation for their parcels, clearly. But it's also clear that the EIR didn't say anything about that because it didn't exist at the time the EIR was prepared. Is that right?
It also didn't identify individual parcels of any kind because it's a county-wide EIR.
But my point is, when the ordinance extended that invitation, if you will, that invitation was not considered in the EIR because it wasn't in the ordinance at that time.
But the EIR looked at a maximum number of parcels and potential area throughout the entire county.
Correct. The EIR didn't analyze the effect of co-location, did it? Because co-location wasn't in the ordinance being evaluative at that time either. Is that right?
Yes, but it looked at many more parcels and smaller parcels, the potential. So, it's all a matter of what we consider to be equivalency.
There was addenda, I mean, there's addenda to the EIR that were adopted as well that would be incorporated into the current EIR that you're looking back to. And the ordinance does provide for co-location. I do not know whether co-location was discussed. As I sit here, I don't remember whether it was noted in the EIR, but that is part of the ordinance.
It was mentioned in the addendum twice, but not analyzed. Okay, I'm turning it over to somebody else.
I just have one or two questions.
Yes, any questions for Gabriel or Doug?
Yeah, if, this is for the planning director. If a complete EIR were to be developed for this zoning, rezoning, who would pay for it and about how much would it cost?
Well, typically, Mr. Commissioner, any kind of environmental work would be paid for by the applicant. And if we're going to do an EIR for this project, it's probably going to be several hundreds of dollars and plus time for the preparation of it. I mean, several thousands of dollars, I'm sorry. I mean, you can't even do, you can't even do a negative deck for, you know, for hundreds of dollars. Yeah, it was several thousands of dollars, and it could be pushing, yeah, you know, depending on the level of analysis, it could be pushing, you know, close to half a million or thereabouts. Now, but the issue really is, even if an EIR was necessary, hypothetically speaking, what would be the environmental issues that would need to be studied that had not already been studied? And I think we're going to come back to the same conclusion that whatever environmental issues that could arise from this project had already been studied in the EIR for 1795. Now, there's a twist to this, which, you know, kind of, you know, just for the sake of discussion. The attorney, opposing attorney had mentioned that they want an EIR that would look at every single potential land use that would be allowed in the new zoning designation to be analyzed. And I thought that was, that is not how SEQA works. SEQA is based on a project-specific. So, for this particular case, for example, it would be, we'll be analyzing the impacts from cannabis grow. So, the emphasis should be what are the impacts related to growing cannabis? But knowing that we were going to have this kind of back-and-forth debate, what the existing negative debt actually does is even talk about some of those other uses that are potentially, that could potentially be allowed in the new zoning designation. So, we've already even, we've already done the analysis on that. So, it kind of begs the question again, if we're asking for an EIR, what specific issues would be analyzed that A, has not already been analyzed in the 1795 EIR? Or B, that would be project-specific, that would be significant enough that cannot be mitigated with the project in front of us? So, I don't really see any significant issues that A, hasn't already been analyzed, such as odor, in a county-wide EIR? B, the proposed development satisfies what we agreed to be adequate setback for odor control. The property is, the project is on 40 acres of land. We don't have any control over which direction the wind blows from one minute to the other. But most importantly, how would an outdoor grow mitigate the impacts of odor? Now, in most indoor grows, you could minimize the impact of odor because everything is being done inside the building and you have filtration systems and so on and so forth. However, the county allows outdoor grow. So, the impact of odor has to be something that would have been analyzed and has been analyzed over the deliberations for not only this project, but for other projects as well. So, I think we're just kind of back to where we started. What are the specific impacts that are particular to this location and this project that an EIR would discover that hasn't already been discovered and analyzed, but most importantly, provide mitigation for? And I don't see it.
I think I would ask you, you've heard all this. You've probably had thoughts occur to you, well, yeah, but there's this and there's that. Can you just provide us a narrative of the subject that we've been talking about so we don't have to ask you all the same questions? Do you have any input other than what we've been getting from the planning director?
Well, first, I'll just say that I'm not an expert in SEQA and I'm not a planner. I can only report on what I've encountered in the inspections. And I can report on inspections of cannabis cultivation sites across the county. I can say that, yes, this product does generate an odor. I can't quantify the odor on any given time of day based on the temperature, humidity, and in order to quantify if there's going to be an increase, of course, you know, a stronger smell is noticeable, but unless we're counting particles that interact with you, the receptors in your nasal cavities, I can't tell if there's a significant increase or not, or whether it doubles or whether there is a, you know, to what extent does the odor increase? I know that it is an unpleasant odor for many people in the community, but however, when we interact on these sites, the smell isn't there all the time. I mean, clearly, they can only cultivate during certain times of the year, and during that cultivation time, the smell ranges, depends on, depending on how many plants and the humidity and the temperature and the prevailing winds and what stage in development this plant is in. So, when it is flowering, it is clearly a strong odor. When I did the inspection on this site, I had to get within five feet of the plants to smell them at that given time, at that time of day with that humidity and that wind speed. And that was from all sides of that canopy. And that's not to say that first thing in the morning there isn't a stronger odor, there is. I've visited these sites in the morning, in the evening, in the middle of the day... I've, I've visited these sites, in the morning, in the evening, in the middle of the day, it varies. It is a wide range of smell differences, depending on all those factors that I've just discovered.
But at the time, you were at this site, you needed to be five, five feet or closer to here?
Approximately five feet from the plants to smell them. They were, they were, they were maturing, they were not flowering, they were approximately five foot tall, and three to, three to five feet wide.
And did I understand that you were going to comment on the insecticide allegations?
Should, should you?
Please do.
So, we, we conducted a complete inspection of the site, based on the complaints that we had received. It is that time of year that we do annual inspections anyway, so I use it as an opportunity to train my staff. So we, we went through every code requirement on that site, and did a thorough inspection. And part of what we inspect for is compliance with the pesticide regulations. Because cannabis is, pesticides in general, for agriculture, haven't really been tested on cannabis, I don't know if there's been any products that have been recently tested, but from my knowledge, anytime you use a pesticide that hasn't been labeled for that type of plant, that's an off-use, and that's not legal for cannabis cultivation. So, we, we inspect for how it's delivered, what it is, and whether it is approved for that plant. What we discovered on-site, there is a tractor, a towed trailer, that is a, an orchard sprayer. It's a smaller orchard sprayer, but it, I mean, I've seen a lot of them in the Central Valley. The material that they are using is a non-hazardous, there's three natural elements, primary elements being soybean oil and citric acid. That material is not required to be registered, it is not required to necessarily even be tracked. What we found on-site is they are treating it like a pesticide, they have it in secondary containment, they are trace, they are tracking every time that material is sprayed, and the quantities that are being sprayed. They're treating it as, as any other pesticide would be on, on any agricultural program that I've been involved in.
So, their use was consistent with your, the county's and state's requirements and policies?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Any questions from either of you for planning director or building official?
I don't have any questions specifically for Doug.
Commissioner Parker?
Nope, not at this time. There's a lot already asked.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere. So, would the applicant like to speak?
Chairman Pla, members of the commission, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm Zach Devonge, attorney, before you, on behalf of the applicant, Whiskey Slide Farms LLC. I'd like to start first by thanking you all for your time this morning, as well as thanking staff for all the hard work they put into developing their staff report and for the presentation this morning. With that, I'd like to make a few extremely important points of clarification. Number one, is that no new use is proposed at all. We currently have one acre of cannabis planted on the lower half of the existing garden terrace. And if you look to figure four in the staff report, the vertical lines that you see are canopy rows. That's what's currently planted now. Further towards the east, that open area, not yet planted, that is where the second acre of canopy would be co-located in the event of the board's approval of this zoning amendment. Another important point is, the garden area, the current garden area, is located approximately 800 feet to the western property line. It's located approximately 500 feet to the southern property line. So although the residences to the, to the west are about 150 feet from the westernmost property line of the subject parcel, the garden is 800 feet away. It's same for the, the property to the south. Another important point of clarification, and to some of the questions that were asked, right now, the commercial premises is comprised of two parcels, essentially. It's comprised of the parcel ending in 044, the merged parcel, that was formerly parcel ending in 043, 044, and 045. As well, part of the cannabis premises encompasses the parcel ending in 085 to the north, which is 235 acres. So currently, there is approximately 276 acres available to develop a cannabis site as part of the commercial cannabis premises. I think the most important point in this is, in the event of the approval of this rezon application, there will be absolutely no physical expansion of the existing infrastructure in place. All of the developed garden area, including the, the structures that are designated for storage, are fully permitted, all the grading is fully permitted, and the existing infrastructure could accommodate, as it sits right now, the co-location of a second acre. Finally, I'd like to point out, the current zoning of the adjacent parcels. So, as you can see, the parcel to the north is currently zoned A1. The subject parcel is here in the middle. The parcel to the west is zoned A1. The two parcels to the east are zoned A1, parcel to the southeast, as well as to the southwest. All of these are zoned A1. So this rezon approval would actually make the subject parcel consistent with a vast majority of the adjacent lands. I think it's upwards of 600 acres surrounding the subject parcel are currently zoned A1. A few other points of clarification, as to the odor, the prevailing winds in the area blow easterly, that's up the existing garden terrace. The infrastructure has actually been repurposed. This was a burnt-out grape vineyard that was destroyed in the Butte Fire. So it's been improved with this infrastructure. To one of the questions that was asked, those white dots in one of the figures in the staff report, that's base rock that was laid down before the physical structures were constructed. I'd like to touch on a couple of the points that were cited in the opposition letter. There's a lot of reference to an EIR. It's extremely important to keep in mind that the opponent initially made reference to the 2015 EIR for the general plan, and not the 2019 cannabis EIR, in which zoning amendments and other land use entitlements were contemplated as future uses, as was co-location of multiple cannabis permits. And to that point, because our current cannabis premises is comprised of over 276 acres, if we were to, say, develop 085 alone, which is currently zoned A1, we could put 10 acres of outdoor cannabis on there. The 2019 EIR limited cannabis properties to one-half acre of greenhouse per 20 acres of land comprising the premises, or one acre of outdoor per 20 acres of land comprising the premises. The current RA zoning, which is the most restrictive of the three parcels, or the two parcels currently comprising the cannabis premises, is more restrictive than the A1 zoning. So approval of this rezon would make it more consistent with the adjacent lands, and it would allow the one acre per 20 acres of land comprising the premises. So with just the infrastructure that we have in place, if we were to just simply use the newly merged parcel ending in 044, it would, it would be 41 acres, we would be limited to two acres of outdoor canopy, which is all that is intended here. So, those are a few of the points that I wanted to make. As well, the access, the primary access for the commercial premises does run via an easement from Jesus Maria Road. That's been substantially approved, new base rock has been laid by the applicants here. There's very, very limited traffic. You have eight employees that are, that are badged and contemplated as part of this commercial cannabis application, I'm sorry, permit. They typically carpool, and so with this rezon and consolidation of two acres on one cannabis site, countywide, the impacts would actually be reduced as far as logistics. And then touching on the odor again, you know, the, the addition of a second acre, if you are immediately adjacent to the cannabis garden, the smell during flower will be somewhat more potent, but when you get further away from the cannabis garden, and as that odor dissipates, the difference in smell between one acre and two acres is, is going to be negligible. So when you're talking about no new use, certainly no intensive, you know, large-scale agricultural use that could potentially occur under A1, that's not the case here. You talk about all of the existing infrastructure being fully permitted, subject to multiple inspections by county agencies, found to be in full compliance, as well as the fact that this is a current use. All we're really proposing here is to make the zoning more consistent with adjacent lands, and to fully utilize the adjacent, or I'm sorry, the existing infrastructure. When you talk about countywide benefits against potential additional impacts, this would effectively double the cannabis tax revenue that the county would receive. As well, I'd like to touch on the fact that, you know, number one, just point of clarification, the parcel to the, sorry, the Cato property, the parcel to the west is actually 41 acres, it's not 14 acres. We've received 13 letters of support from community members countywide, speaking to not only the quality of the craftsmanship and the work of these improvements, but also the character and the good reputation of the applicants themselves. Ms. Alexander runs Calaveras Garden Supply, and she has for the last six years. She's been an integral component of supporting this newly legalized industry in the county, which is second in revenue and employment only to local government. As well, Mr. Shermer started developing this property in late 2020, and has basically refurbished the entire lands after the devastation of the Butte Fire. We've employed local contractors. We have developed this property with a high, high level of care, and I think with the approval of this rezon, although, you know, there is skepticism about cannabis in general by some neighbors, and I think this is typical of a lot of these sites, I don't think you're going to find a more responsible professional group to be stewards of this land, and to be responsible business owners, as far as what's occurring now, and what will continue to occur, albeit with a second acre of canopy allowed following the approval of this rezon. So, with that, I had some prepared comments, but I'm happy, you know, before I get into some of the finer points, to answer any questions that you may have, but I did want to make those points of clarification, because I think they're extremely important.
I have one question. On your second page of your written brief or comment, at the end of number four, you say addition of a second acre would not affect neighboring parcels in any way. And if you speak to the question of odor on that, and how you said it might be negligible, I don't know if we have any way of judging what the effect would be, but wouldn't they be affected in some way?
I don't think, honestly, I don't think they would be affected any more than they're already affected with the cannabis use under the ministerial permit. As I mentioned, I think any potential use would be negligible. So when I say not in any way, I think what, the more appropriate terminology would be, any additional impact would be negligible to what is already occurring.
And do you have any, do we have anything in the record that would support your, your thoughts that, given the distances of these residences from the grow, that an additional, a doubling of the size of the grow would result in negligible effects as to odor?
I think Mr. Oliver touched on it, you know, unless you were standing at the property line with an olfactometer to, you know, draw the distinction between the potency of the smell, as measured by that device, you know, with one acre versus two acres, I, I think it's, it's common sense, it's all located in the same area, there's already cannabis growing on-site. And actually, the cannabis to be planted, again, is going to be further away from the parcel to the, to the east, or to the west, sorry.
Thank you.
Sure.
When did your clients acquire these three parcels that are now being merged?
2018? Early 2019.
2019, so it was after the Butte Fire.
Correct.
And how many employers are there now?
Employees?
Yeah.
Probably about five at the moment.
Three full-time employees.
Okay.
Plus the ownership.
Three full-time, okay. When harvest time, you'll be more? Correct, up to eight.
And if you double the size of the grow, how does that affect the number of employees that you'll have to have, if at all?
With the second cannabis permit, there is a possibility for us to increase the employee count, but with the permitting process, all of the additional impacts are fully mitigated by some of the measures that they have in place that were also considered in the cannabis EIR, which informed the current permitting process that we went through for the first acre.
The, the question is, are there going to be more employees, so will there be more traffic than there is currently crossing the neighboring parcel?
There could be more employees, I don't think it would be-
Like one or two more employees, not doubling of employees?
One or two more regular employees is certainly possible, but again, as far as logistics and traffic, I, I think the differences would be negligible.
So, I, I have a question. Is there access to the 235-acre parcel to the north from Ponderosa Way?
There is.
And does that access get you, could it get you all the way to the grow site?
It could.
And is there an impediment to that happening?
Well, currently, the driveway is relatively narrow. When you talk about public safety vehicles coming through there, that would, that would have to be expanded. Certainly, that would not be ideal. However, the current access roadway via Jesus Maria is sufficient, it's been inspected. Again, it's been improved by the applicants as a subject of their refurbishment of the property and development of this commercial cannabis site, and it is sufficient to service the property as it sits, and it would be sufficient to service the property moving forward.
But if there, the access through the neighbors was to become an area of contention in the future, you have an alternative way that the cultivation site and buildings could be accessed through your own property?
Potentially, yes.
Do the employees live in the county, or are they coming from outside?
They do, they live in the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody? And I understand that you'll be relocating an existing grow site from somewhere else in the county to this site. That's what the, the co-location is. This is not a new area of cultivation?
I think, I think Commissioner Wooster touched on the fact that there was a limited number of permits contemplated under the cannabis EIR, and it's actually significantly less than the 750. 750 registrants came forward in 2016, but currently, in order to be eligible for a commercial cannabis permit, you would have had to have been registered. As well, you would have had to have applied and received a temporary cannabis license from the state, or been denied your temporary cannabis license only because of the county's subsequent ban after the registration process had closed. So, I couldn't tell you, maybe Mr. Oliver could say, how many potential permits can be allowed in the county, but we would be staying within that closed universe of permits that would be available.
So this is not necessarily a relocation from another site?
No.
But it, assuming there were like 190 to 200 permits total available, which includes, I think, ones that were in the pipeline, but weren't, weren't processed at the time, this, this additional permit would be one of that limited number, correct?
That's, that's correct, 100%.
Whether or not somebody grew in it, grew under it before or not, doesn't matter.
Right, right. Thank you. And whether or not it's yours, or one that you're able to acquire from someone else.
Correct, and we've already acquired a second right to apply.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak today, or anybody online who would like to speak? Come on up, and, I can't quite see you.
My name is Craig Cato, and I'm on the west side of the property, in question. I've been a resident for 40 years, lived through the Butte Fire. Myself, my son, and grandchildren rebuilt back up on the parcels. We have nothing against the grows, and wish success to the grows. And Whiskey Slide Farms is incredibly professional group of people, nothing against them at all. The problem is, there are existing residences, established residences, and we had no notification that this grow was going to go in. that this grow was going to go in. And there's no one here, except for me, who lives there, who can tell you about the odor. It's horrendous. We sleep with our windows closed. My granddaughter's woken up with headaches. The immediate neighbor, about 200 feet away, my son owns that parcel. It has the easement through it. There is a rental on that. The only thing that polies is a swamp cooler, so it pulls the outside air, and it just fills the house with, with the smell of the odor. Again, I've been up here 40 years and never smelled odor like this. The problem that we have is that this grow was put in our neighborhood. There's a really unique geographical area right there. It's a valley. So the grow sits up on one side of the hill. I'm on the other side of the hill, and then that's a valley. The perduan winds in the morning, which are typical of the cooling winds coming from the High Sierras down, bring the grow odor right into this valley. So it doesn't dissipate away. It's very unique that it gets trapped. And my home is on one side. I immediately walk outside in the morning. I have to sleep with my windows closed. There's no breakfast on the patio. My grandchildren and daughter-in-law, who live on the 7.8 acre parcel just south, again, have to sleep with their windows closed. They've had some issues, again with headaches. It's just, the odor is incredible. So again, for anyone here to say that even the owners don't live there, that there's an impact from going from one acre to two acres, I have to argue with that. Because we are the ones who are paying the price. It's our health, our lifestyle. It's why we moved here. Dispensaries are not allowed near schools. And there's a reason. At the school, the children, that's their, that's the environment. It's close to a dispensary. Our environment now has been impacted by this grow. And I wonder if there's any requirement for a grow with distance from or an existing Because there are thousands of acres out there that this grow could have been put, and the owners have the financial ability to put it anywhere, but it's convenient to be located next to their $10,000 ranch. It could have been located anywhere, and they would have built it, where it would not have affected anyone if someone had taken a look at that. But it's, again, it's, it's right next to, it's my view shed. I now look at 2,000 plants, and I smell 2,000 plants, especially in the morning when we have the downwind winds. We do have those northerly winds that bring it down the valley, and typically, we do have the easterlies, as the attorney had mentioned, that blow it back over parcels that where there are no residences. And I doubt anyone ever built there because of this smell. But we were already established there. We had no, we didn't come there and build knowing that there was a grow with 2,000 plants. Now going to be about 4,000 plants. So we were kind of the victims. All of us that own the real estate around there, I've had real estate agents out, have basically said, well, good luck trying to sell, and you're going to take a huge financial hit. So again, it's the immediate residences that are paying the price for this. I understand that the county has moneyed a game, but it could have been put in a much more appropriate place, not in a neighborhood. I moved back there after the grow. My son asked me if he could raise his kids there. He's a captain for CAL FIRE, first responder. And my two grandchildren and daughter-in-law. Across the street is Cody. He's a road vet, trying to raise his three children. They're two, four, and six. And then Kyle's rental, which is a couple hundred feet away from the grow, a couple, two young children. So we are the ones who are paying this price. In the, in the report, it did state the odor impact over the county would be minimal, and that's very true. But the odor impact within this micrometeorology area, this valley, where existing people live and are raising their families, is tremendous. It's completely changed our lifestyle. It's, we have concerns of the water use. From what I understand, an adult plant over its size span will require close to 900 gallons of water, and there's approximately 2,000 plants. I ask you to please research that. That's 1.8 million gallons for the one acre. You double that, 3.6 million gallons. Where is that water coming from? Their well is drilled just several hundred feet from my son's rental. I'm straight across. I have two other wells on my eight acre parcel where my son lives. One of those went dry before the fire. So we don't have unlimited use or supply of water. And I wonder who is checking that? Do we have ample water? Is the draw of water for that grow going to affect the water table in our wells? And if it does, what do we do?
Thank you for your comments.
May I have one more time? Okay.
But I do have a question.
Yes.
Is your, is your attorney going to be appearing today?
He's online.
Because I would have some questions for him.
Okay.
And the, the smell factor that you've been describing, what, what months of the year is it?
This is the first year of the grow.
Yeah.
This is the first year of the grow.
Yeah.
And what, when, when did the smell become what you were describing?
I believe it's been about the last month.
Uh huh.
Yeah. And it's progressively gotten worse. This morning was the worst. I even got a phone call from Leanne and Tony Sparwell on the corner of Ponderosa and Whiskey Slide. They just said, oh my God, this smells horrible. And that's outside of the picture here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do have a question for you. You had said that you had not been informed that this was going to be happening here. So the neighbors weren't informed at all.
He's talking about the original ministerial grow theme, not about today's hearing.
No, we only notified about the ongoing, but not about the original.
You were notified about the original.
We were not.
That's what I was trying to.
That's what I'm saying, because that's a ministerial act. Thank you.
One question. Do you have any concerns about increased traffic if this zoning amendment is approved and another acre of grow goes in?
We do have a lot of concerns about the increased traffic. And as a matter of fact, we put a camera up to count the amount of traffic coming through the easement. The day that we put the camera up, they immediately stopped coming through the property. And started driving around down Ponderosa through the Whiskey Slide Ranch, through the owner's ranch, coming in. And they had been continually using that for perhaps a month and a half now.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Is there any other member of the audience who would like to speak? Are you the, are you the applicant?
I am.
So just hang on a minute. We're going to let the public speak, and you'll have another opportunity. Is there anybody online in it?
Yes, there is. Mr. Swett, would you like to speak?
Well, it's my understanding that Sarah Cato is also on Zoom. I think it would be probably helpful to hear from her first, and then I could speak after that.
I think she wanted to hear from you first.
Okay. Well, that's good.
Can we get a little more volume?
Is that better?
Can't tell.
Okay, so I just want to, I appreciate the opportunity.
I'm sorry. We need more volume. I'll turn on my hearing aids, but not everybody has the option to do that.
I can turn a little bit here, but it's, he's going to have to speak.
Testing, testing.
Okay.
Okay, so can you guys hear me clearly now?
Can you move a little closer to your mic?
I'll, I'll do my best. I am, my face, I literally pressed to a computer.
That's good.
I appreciate the opportunity to address the commission. And I think one point of clarity that needs to be emphasized is that the, the application before you today is for a change of zoning. That is a completely discretionary approval on your part. And because it is a new and discretionary approval, you are allowed to consider any reasonable factor that might influence your decision about whether or not this is a good idea. There may be in the county, since my contention is improperly relying upon old EIR, but even if that EIR were proper, and even if the, the impacts that we're discussing had been overridden in that EIR, because we're talking about a new discretionary approval, the planning commission is entitled to consider any reasonable factor, including odor, including the increased traffic that's going to come from, no matter how somebody might want to sugarcoat it, this is a doubling of intensity of the operation. The, the storage and curing facilities are to the south of the grow. There's going to be additional employees, going to be additional traffic on a road coming up from the south that was an easement granted for residential purposes, not for commercial purposes. So it isn't just the impacts that are facing the neighbors from the additional plants, but the overall intensity of the commercial operation that is going to be proposed on property adjacent to these homeowners. There's 235 acres to the north that the applicant owns. That sounds like a good spot for them to provide, you know, do additional commercial cannabis operations, not on what was originally three small parcels, three small residential parcels, that are close to the existing neighbors. So again, it's, it's a discretionary action, regardless of the machinations or the debate we're going to have about CEQA. CEQA aside, it is a discretionary action that the planning commission can recommend or approve in its own discretion. And if the planning commission, and it's our argument that you should, comes to the conclusion that's just a bad idea, then you could recommend that the board of supervisors with the zone change not be approved. From a CEQA standpoint, we've, we've heard several times that the 2019 EIR analyzed zoning changes. And even if zoning changes were mentioned in 2019 EIR, you can't analyze something in the abstract, and you certainly can't analyze something like that for a parcel that didn't exist. You've got three residential parcels that were merged without any CEQA analysis or discretionary approval to create this new parcel adjacent to existing residences. The idea that that somehow was contemplated and that this intensity of cannabis cultivation adjacent to houses was contemplated in 2019 EIR just doesn't make logical sense. If that were true, then anybody could go into a residential subdivision, say one that is comprised of five acre lots, buy four contiguous five acre, five acre lots, merge them, and start growing cannabis. And that was never contemplated by the 2019 EIR. The idea was that if you already had a 20 acre parcel, maybe you could come in and ask for new zoning. But again, the new zoning is discretionary approval. The idea that that programmatic EIR somehow was able to analyze and did analyze the, the effects of rezones on, you know, existing land uses and existing residents, it, it just doesn't hold water. So I know that the, the county disagrees. Ultimately, you know, it's up to the judge to decide, but it's our opinion, and I think it's the better opinion, that what you're facing today has never been treated as it should be, as the law requires under CEQA. So with that, I'm happy to ask, answer any questions if there be.
Mr. Swett, this is Commissioner Laddish. You rely on Public Resources Code 21080 to say that there should have been a full EIR done here. Assuming that that code section is applicable, hasn't there been a complete environmental review when you combine the existing county EIR, countywide EIR, with the initial study NADA declaration that was done looking at this specific rezoning suggestion? Don't those things, two, two together satisfy your requirement that there be an environmental impact report?
They do not. And what you're, again, we're comparing apples to oranges. We have a EIR, programmatic EIR for cannabis production, but the application and project before you today is a simple rezone. And it's brought up earlier in the commission's debate about the fact that the rezoning comes with it a large suite of uses that are allowed by right. And just because the grow is where it is now on the parcel doesn't mean it can't be moved, doesn't mean the buildings that they've got on there couldn't be converted into a chicken farm, or a pig farm, or any of these other allowed uses that are as of right. It's a completely different project. And even the applicant will admit that once this is done, they have to go apply for their cannabis permit. Now, this isn't a permit for cannabis production. This is an application to change the zoning from residential to general agriculture, which goes from an emphasis, or at least an equal emphasis on residential uses, to production agriculture uses. Both of which are good, but we've just merged three residential parcels, and we're going to plop down a commercial cannabis grow right in the middle of it. It could, we could be talking about plopping down a turkey farm, or a hog farm, or a dairy. It'd be exactly the same discussion.
We've received legal advice that, that those types of non-stated intentions need not be covered at this point. So you just disagree that you think we should be looking at every possible A1 use that could be given to this property, right?
I do contend that. And we're, we're saying right now that the applicant is only going to use it for cannabis. Well, if he gets the rezone and his cannabis, second cannabis permit is not approved, or if the cannabis market continues to go the way that it is and it no longer becomes economically viable, he could come back in and use one of those other as-of-right uses, convert the property to a dairy, whatever that case may be.
Excuse me, have you, have you actually seen this property?
Only on Google Earth, sir.
And you mentioned just now, possibility of a dairy farm. Would you say this property would be suitable for a dairy farm? Possible for a dairy farm?
It would probably not be a good spot for a dairy because there's not enough land for the supporting agricultural.
So we're looking at a use that it is appropriate for, as far as county ordinances go. Do you agree that there's a canon of California constitutional or statutory construction that a statute may be disregarded to avoid absurd result?
That is, it is a, one of the canons of statutory construction, for sure. It's not disregarded, but construed in a way that avoids the absurd result.
Well, I'd just like to follow along. What you, you would say that the county, when they receive this rezoning application, the county would have to have done an entirely new environmental impact report, correct?
They would have to do a new environmental document that focused specifically on the rezone application and not rely on an and not rely on an old EIR that was programmatic in nature and specific to cannabis.
And yet, if there'd been a completely new EIR, do you have any indication that it would reach any different conclusion, especially when combined with what we have in the initial study, that the, especially the older problems would be subject to overriding considerations?
Well, we, we don't know what the EIR says until it's actually produced, but it's likely to show impacts from odors to the existing residents. We would also have the opportunity to analyze the groundwater use and how that might affect residential properties that are nearby. At the end of the day, after the planning commission had the full information disclosed to them, in this site-specific situation, if you felt that a statement of overriding consideration was warranted, then you could, you could add one. If you, if you didn't, then, you know, the opposite would be true. But CEQA is about the process and about being able to make a decision with all the facts. And right now, the commission doesn't have all the facts.
The, if, we would have to disagree with the statement of overriding considerations in order to, to reach a, a conclusion that there were not overriding considerations in this case, wouldn't we?
Yeah, and so it would be within, the, the statement of overriding consideration is, is your opinion that the environmental impacts, which can't be mitigated, are less significant than the benefits that, that everybody receives as a result. If you don't believe that, if that's not your independent judgment, then you wouldn't adopt such a statement of overriding consideration.
So by implication, you're suggesting that we should ask the board of supervisors to reconsider their statement of overriding considerations, at least in this particular case?
Well, regardless of what the EIR says, it is within your independent judgment and ability to, to decide that this just isn't a good spot for this, that the rezone doesn't make sense in light of current conditions there, and recommend that the rezone not be approved, regardless of what the EIR says.
And do you, you haven't pointed out, and I assume you don't have any of this, any way that if, if this rezoning were permitted, and then the permit were permitted, that that would somehow be a violation of the cannabis statute in any way, right?
As to your cannabis ordinance, you know, that, that is existing law, and as long as you comply with the cannabis ordinance itself, I can't say right now whether it's gonna be violated or not. But what I am saying is the CEQA documentation used to adopt it is not sufficient to support the zone change that's now been requested in this particular situation.
All right, well, thank you.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Swett? Nope.
No.
Is there anyone else online who would like to speak?
Yes, Sarah Kato. Okay. Go ahead, Sarah. Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I think if I make a mistake on the name here, my name is Ashley Kato. I'm the sister-in-law of Sarah. So I, my husband is Kyle. We own the property. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So we own the property 15301, the one that my father-in-law Craig had discussed, with the tenants in it, and then we also have, we currently reside on 15301, which is also very visible from the cannabis grow. So our tenants are in the property where there is the easement. They have two small children. And then we are in the property just behind that, but it meets up with that 26 acre parcel of ours. So we currently have 33 acres. I mean, my father-in-law kind of touched a lot on the things that I wanted to discuss today. I also had a meeting with Doug Oliver about a week and a half ago. So for his sake, this'll kind of be a repeat session. So I guess it's just to keep it short and sweet. If you guys wouldn't approve a two acre grow to go behind your house, I think it should be considered for our sake as well. My children, there've been plenty of days already where they're not wanting to go outside and play because of the smell. And that generally takes place when we've got the Northland, and it blows just directly to our home. We can't open our windows. My daughter, she's actually going through some health problems right now. Oh, I'm sorry, my computer just glitched for a second. But we're trying to get better, so she, she's pretty sensitive to the things in this grow in general, the smell, the pesticides. It really just blows right onto our property.
Cars on, cars.
Okay, that's fine. I'm sorry, my daughter was just talking to me. Okay, one second. All of this to say, you know, the pesticides that were talked about, the citric acid and all of this stuff, like, these are synthetic forms of things. I don't know if any of you guys have done research on those things, but there is risk to all of that. And it would be negligent to say that there isn't. I would encourage you guys to start researching the synthetic forms of these things. Whatever it comes down to is, just like Craig said, I have nothing against cannabis grows. If somebody wants to grow pot, grow pot. I personally would not. But there's plenty of property where this grow could have gone, and he had to put it literally in our backyard. So we're already dealing with 2,000 plants that's affecting us every day. And it just, there, my children, my family, my father-in-law, our neighbors Cody and Kristen, my tenants, we argue environment, so for you guys to be sitting in Calaveras County in general, of course, Calaveras County, they're, they're just gonna be benefited financially. So I think it would be pretty negligent to not take into consideration the people that it's affecting every day. Am I making sense?
Are there any questions for Sarah? No. Thank you. Is there anyone else waiting to speak?
Yes. I thought that was Ashley, but Ashley Kato wants to speak. Go ahead, Ashley.
No, it said, so it must both be on the same line.
Yeah, no, we're on the, we're on the same line. I did just speak.
Okay. Would Sarah like to speak? Sarah, go ahead.
Hello?
Okay, hello, hi, sorry, there we go.
All right, I'm just making sure, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry, we, we sound very similar, I know. I shared the link to make sure that the rest of our family was included in this. This is obviously Craig and Ashley have spoken too. This is a family affair. We've been there for a very long time, having grown up in the area. And I just wanted to support and point out some additional things that were included in the environmental checklist that was supplied for the initial study. And just looking through that briefly, I haven't had a lot of time to really delve into that, but a couple items to note, and I just wanted to follow up with you guys, the board, and see if those things have been uncompleted. Obviously, one of the first concerns is our water consumption. During many years of drought in the past, our residential wells have run out of water. And so we, as the residents, are very concerned what happens to us when this incredible lot of water now is, is on our local aquifer. This aquifer is shared, you know, by many of the residents in the area. So your environmental impact study says that alternatives are required to endure and waste discharge requirements with the state water resources control. So cannabis cultivation on the subject parcel would be subject to the water board requirements and is therefore within the scope of the project described. So have you guys received any sort of waste discharge requirements or report from, that have been approved with the state water resources control board for this parcel? So I would recommend you guys look into that. I don't know if you guys- Again, follow up on that.
One moment.
You cannot get approval for a state license unless you have approval from the Water Resources Control Board. You cannot get a local permit unless you have a state license. So we have received that approval from the Water Board.
Because I've been in touch with the State Water Board, you guys have not had an approved permit for water rights. And although you do have an approved cannabis license with the state. So I'm missing the point, if you can have me support that.
Are you trying to ask questions of the applicant?
I'm just pointing out the fact that within your environmental impact report, you guys have stated that the Water Resources Control Board is required to have a waste discharge requirement that this parcel is subject to. And so far, when I've been in touch with the State Water Board, they have no water rights application on file for this parcel. Do you guys have a water waste discharge report or a management program for this parcel?
Excuse me, this is not an opportunity for you to ask questions of the applicant or the planning commission. It's an opportunity for you to state your concerns, and, and it's fine to ask the question. The applicants will have an opportunity to come back up and they may answer your questions at that time. Also, our planning director will speak again towards the end, and he may respond to some of your questions, but this is not a, a back and forth opportunity right now.
Okay, well, I would definitely look into that. So, and just following up with page 23 of the environmental checklist, it shows that a less significant impact right for cultural resources, there were two graves that have been desecrated on this property that is subject to be merged. And in there, you guys had made mention that you made good faith efforts in order to contact people, but we've been in touch with all local tribes and no one has heard from the parcel applicants or party. Moving forward to, I just wanted to scroll down to page 31. So 31 requires that you guys receive submit annual well reports, and then also you guys maintain daily water use from July through September, although my question too is also why wasn't October included? Because October is usually harvest. And have the board received these annual well reports for estimated water usage for this? And would the local aquifer support that groundwater withdrawal? Moving forward to page 33, you guys did receive an inspection in February from Dave LeBree from the State Water Resources Control Board Rights Division, and that he did inspect the local areas. He said that he was unable to determine a valid basis of the right for the collection of water. And he discussed the applicant need for appropriate water right to authorize the collection of water and seasonal storage. And the applicant was receptive to the idea of submitting applications to the water right board and the water rights, and promised to provide information or measurements necessary to determine the appropriate type of water right for which to apply. Again, this was not filed with the State Water Board per this parcel number. There's also, I wanted to just reiterate on your page 21, as you had previously made mention and shown in the satellite imagery, that significant grading and terracing was completed in order to develop this property as the parties made mention that these were improvements. And I wanted to be clear on page 30, or on page 21 that you guys have, according to the federal DSA, which is the biological, let's see, let me, where is that? His biological site assessment, right, by the Strange Resource Management on 2021, that four regulated species were documented to occur within three miles of the subject parcel, of which additional two are on the federal listed database for threatened species. So how did you guys approve the grading of this parcel with such a significant impact to the biological, local land resources and local flora and fauna? And then to second, Doug Oliver, he said that no state approved pesticides for cannabis currently. So has the local Calaveras County Air Pollution Control Board approved any specific pesticides to be used for cannabis? I understand his concern that you can't use other fertilizers or pesticides that aren't specifically tested on or developed for cannabis. But I wanted to verify with the local Calaveras County Air Pollution Control Board if there is a local county-approved pesticide for the use of cannabis, which I assume there would be since we have a cannabis division.
So I just have a question. Have you presented what you're speaking on in writing? Have you presented what you're speaking on in writing? Because you are going through it awfully fast and it's hard to track, and there seem to be more questions than statements.
Yes, I, I'm just, I have been in touch with Madeline within the planning division and trusted her to escalate those items for the rezoning application. So as a local planning commissioner, I would assume that he would be aware of these items also.
Is there anything else before we give somebody else a chance to talk?
Nope, I think everything else was made clear with Craig and Ashley.
Thank you. Annette, do we have anybody else online?
Yes, we do. Liz Lucas, go ahead and speak.
Thank you, and you guys are great on your Zoom stuff. I appreciate that. This is Liz Lucas. I'm from the Bureau of Land Management, and I'm the realty specialist for the Motherlode Field Office, of which we cover this county.
Excuse me, could you speak a little more slowly, please?
No problem. This is Liz Lucas. I am the specialist for the Bureau of Land Management, Motherlode Field Office, that is responsible for Calaveras County. Are you able to hear me clearly?
Yeah.
Yes. Fantastic, thank you. I put in the chat a couple of the different policies and procedures that we require as far as federal lands that are involved in any transportation of cannabis. And, and then I have also sent some of that information to Mr. Elliott as well. And just wanted to make aware that county maintained roads that run through federal lands are county maintained, they are not county-owned, and that the ownership still falls under federal regulations, of which- falls under federal regulations, of which cannabis is still a Schedule I illegal drug federally and cannot be transported over federal lands. And that was my statement. So does anybody have any questions? And so there's a parcel that when you go through Jesus Maria Road, that is BLM land, and if you go through Ponarosa Way going north, it is also goes through BLM land.
Right now, we're considering a rezoning application. What you're saying is quite interesting, but I don't know that it's relevant to whether this property should be rezoned to agricultural.
I wasn't certain on that, and I just wanted to make the planning commission aware because that BLM hasn't had opportunities as many in the past to be able to bring this forward. And we're trying to eliminate some of our costs that are associated with the cannabis productions that are illegal or legal, that have caused several millions of dollars in costs to BLM just in our own field office.
Yeah, I appreciate your coming forward. It's just, as far as I can see, we could approve this rezoning. And then if the government were to change its policy as to transportation on BLM land that involve cannabis, the zoning would be there, and the permit then, and the government's, the effect of the government on the permit would come to the fore at that point.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Thank you for letting me speak. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions for me?
No, thank you very much for the clarification.
I appreciate it, and thank you for letting me chat.
Is there anyone else online?
Yes, we have a phone number ending in 5105. He would like to speak, go ahead.
Hi, this was Sarah Cato, because I've already spoken, but thank you very much for making sure everyone was there, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else online, Commissioner Fautman?
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Just one moment, anybody other than the applicant in the audience who would like to speak. Okay. Gabriel, do you have any comments you'd like to make before we invite the applicant back up?
Madam Chair, that would depend on actually responding to any specific questions. There have been a lot of comments, and I don't know if, and I should respond to each and every one of them, but if there are any specific areas of those comments that seem to be a little problematic or challenging, I think I can provide some clarification on those. But in general terms, we had comments about the EIR and the negative deck, then we had comments regarding the suitability of the location of this grow. And I think it's something that you recognized earlier on, is that when 1795 was approved by the board of supervisors, the concept of having a ministerial approval for these grow sites was based on the anticipation that the county was going to receive, you know, many, many applications. And so rather than studying each particular location, you have one EIR that handles all the potential impacts, with the idea that any other leftover impacts could be addressed through a negative declaration or a lesser environmental review. The two things that we do know is that the EIR had overriding considerations for traffic and transportation, so we couldn't even go back and rehash that if we wanted to. And then it had overriding impacts on air quality. I have heard this morning about the use of water. When these grows get their permits through the state, there are certain regulations they have to follow. I wouldn't try to establish a grow site without knowing that I have the capacity to actually water my plants. I mean, that's one of the most critical ingredients. So if that is an area that I'm hearing that we have to go and study and analyze, then I want to make a comparison to what some of the other more land use intensive uses that could be allowed on this parcel with zone change. So that is not cannabis related, hog farm, chicken farm, things that generates significantly more odors, flies. When I've worked in communities where, you know, residents near chicken farms are constantly complaining about flies 24 hours a day. So to kind of isolate one particular use, because it generates intermittent odors at specific times of the year versus a use potentially that is also allowed in the zoning designation that generates round-the-clock odor and noise to boot. So I'm not really sure whether or not, you know, we should penalize a particular use that has a ministerial approval, albeit that we are considering zone change to increase the growth footprint, but to introduce other issues that have, in my mind, been thoroughly discussed in the master environmental impact report. And to date, I'm not hearing anything specific to this particular location that has not already been addressed in the EIR. I believe that the environmental documentation for this project, which you have in your staff report package, satisfies the potential environmental concerns that there are for this particular project.
So then I would have a question on that, just because, in my understanding of it, is that the EIR report did not go into looking at that area as an A1 because they were looking at it in its current zoning. And that's why it identified it as being less than significant, because it was going to be used for residential, not the general agricultural use.
The EIR did not look at individual parcels, period. It looked at the countywide effects, and cannabis was allowed on RA parcels. So the change from RA to A1 is not changing how many acres of cannabis could be grown on that parcel. It's only changing whether they could be right next to each other, the two acres.
But the RA acreage is limited, it's not?
No, they have 40 acres, they could have divided it into two acre parcels and had two one acre grows. The reason for the A1 is to allow co-location on the existing developed pad. So it's a convenience for them to minimize the area that they're doing their grow on.
I interpret the A1 as being more of a commercial purpose versus a residential farm.
It is true, but it wouldn't change what is allowed under the cannabis ordinance in this particular case. But there are other uses that could be.
Okay, so I'm going to go on the newbie card.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Because I don't know a lot of this. Okay, but my concern is, is that I'm not even looking at this as a cannabis project, because there are no exclusions that I can add to an ordinance when I go through and change the zoning on something. So if I'm looking at this, and I'm being asked to change the zoning on something, I'm looking at it as it could be used for anything that falls under A1. Am I correct in that? Or is because this is being shown as a cannabis potential project, that, because if I'm somebody that has a home next to that, or is purchasing a home next to that, I'm looking at everything that that property can be zoned down and can be used as the potential of what I'm moving next to.
So, yes, and if you look, almost all the properties are zoned A1 in the area.
And so my question would be, when did that happen? Because, you know, when the original person or group of people who went and designed this, they did it for a specific purpose. And in my understanding of this, is that RA is for things like mineral, you know, cultivation, or things that don't require a lot of water, things that are not, it doesn't say alfalfa fields. So there was a purpose of why they zoned it the way that they did.
It's because it was smaller parcels. And so you don't generally zone smaller parcels A1. That's the reason. Because it was pre-existing, and they don't come in with a new overlay and try to put a general plan designation or zoning designation on it that is inconsistent with the size of the parcels that are already there. Gabriel, is that?
Yes, Madam Chair, it is.
So, yes, and you are correct, that the A1 designation would allow them to do anything allowed by right in A1. That also could be done on the particular parcel, because the parcel itself is not conducive to a lot of uses. Yeah, but you're right.
I mean, it's conducive to, I mean, there's buildings there now, so it's conducive to chicken farms and turkey farms, and up to 16,000 turkeys. And, you know, so I mean, there's a lot of things that potentially could be used.
Possibly be.
Okay, thank you.
You're correct.
If I just may add some clarification to that, as far as Sequois is concerned, Sequois documents are based on what we call a project. What is the project in this particular case? The project is not a chicken farm, and if the project were a chicken farm, then the tenure of the analysis would be geared towards potential impacts of having a chicken farm on the property. The project here is for cannabis grow, and that is very, very clear. So the discussion all along is geared towards a cannabis grow. And so this idea that the environmental document should analyze all these other uses, that is not how, that's not how Sequois works. At the same time, we did list some of the potential uses that, you know, could be allowed under that zoning designation, either by right or by conditional use permit.
Right.
Yeah.
But we are looking at a zone change right now.
Right.
So unless somebody else has anything they'd like to say, I'm going to ask the applicant to come back up and respond to some of the comments and questions you've heard.
Madam Chair, thank you, I do appreciate it. One, touching on Ms. Cato's comment about some of the water usage not being registered. She is mixing up, I guess confusing, the ponds that are not a part of the commercial cannabis premises located on a different part of the property. Those are in the process of being registered with the state water resources control board. That is distinct from the regional water quality control board that regulates waste discharge from cannabis premises, of which we are in full compliance. So the lack of registration on those ponds, those ponds were never registered, even before the applicants owned the property. Since the applicants came in, they did start that process, they're in the process of being registered, but importantly, have nothing to do with the commercial cannabis project itself, nothing whatsoever. To the comment about the alleged grave desecration. So we did have a cultural resources survey conducted at the outset of the parcel merger pursuant to the zoning amendment pursuant specifically to adding the second acre of canopy. There was no data, no evidence, no comment from the local Native American tribe that there was any sort of grave like this in the area alleged to be a historic grave site. Specifically, when that allegation was raised, Trish Fernandez from In Context, the cultural resources firm, specifically investigated those allegations again and found no evidence to support those allegations at all. Third, as to water usage.
I shouldn't have done that.
I think I'll turn down my hearing.
So we've got drip irrigation set up on the one acre. That drip irrigation would be set up on the second acre. We also submit annual well flow tests to the county. An annual well flow test would be required for each permit, of which there would be two in the event of approval of the zoning amendment and subsequent cannabis permit. So water usage is regulated, we have ample water to service not only one acre, but two. As I mentioned earlier, all of the infrastructure in place will support the second acre. The biological resources survey that Mr. Strange conducted found that there would be no significant impact on any native species whatsoever, I just wanted to make that clear. He did identify some off-site, miles away from the property itself, but none in the area of the subject parcel, let alone the immediate area of the commercial cannabis premises. Five would be that the state strictly regulates pesticide usage for cannabis operations. They are all organic amendment, they are not synthetic chemical compounds, they're all organic. And so I wanted to make that clear as well. As to the commentary from BLM, the Jesus Maria access road does not cross through BLM land. There is nothing specific to the commercial cannabis premises that has any bearing on BLM land whatsoever. And then finally, to some of your questions, Commissioner Fisk, I would say that the cannabis EIR conducted in 2019 did consider zoning amendments and land use entitlements pursuant to cannabis permitting, but specifically the initial study resulting in the mitigated negative declaration that the county conducted, did analyze not only the proposed use for cannabis cultivation, but also potential feasible uses. So where, you know, under RA, you could not have as intensive agricultural uses as you had under A1, based on the layout of the property and potential feasible uses. Not only did they analyze, you know, the additional second acre, but they did analyze those additional feasible uses that could be conducted under A1. But even with that, there are no intensive agricultural uses proposed, and we would welcome, should it be the pleasure of the planning commission, it may place conditions on the approval of this zoning amendment that no large-scale intensive agricultural uses take place. I don't think that's necessary. Again, the existing infrastructure in place will not be developed any further, will be expanded upon. We're literally just using the empty space that's currently available in the garden for the second acre.
I'm sorry, I just, so conditional zoning is a strange thing that the county doesn't do. Are you saying you'd be willing to enter into an agreement with the county to not do anything other than cannabis on the property?
With the caveat that nothing other than what is currently occurring on the property, which does include small-scale livestock grazing, so there's some goats on the property that, you know, graze on the land, and, you know, those ponds are also available for fire protection during the wildfires. So other than the uses that are currently occurring, we would welcome a condition that no large-scale agricultural uses or nothing other than what is currently being conducted occur.
So what I would recommend, if the commission wants to take Mr. Driven on this offer, I would recommend that it take place in the form, instead of conditional zoning, which is, there's a lot of issues with that, that it take the form of, perhaps, an agreement that's between the county and Mr. Driven that could possibly be entered into before that item goes to the board. If the commission was interested in approving the item.
So just one question is that, if, I know that you have the infrastructure there, what kind of water quantity testing have you done to ensure that there's available water for this next, this next projected future project?
So when we went through the permitting process for the first acre, we had to submit a well flow report to them that was sufficient for the first acre of cannabis. Based on our assessment, it would be a significant amount of water to service a second grow, but even with that, we would be subject to the permitting process for the second acre of canopy. So we would have to submit a second well flow report, based on mitigation measures in place, including our drip irrigation, et cetera. The county, in its discretion, would have to make the determination that, based on the available water, we were eligible for that second permit.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does anybody have any further questions? It looks like the applicant would like to speak for herself for a moment.
I'm Tina Alexander. You guys, they, you guys have talked a lot about smell today, and I wanted to bring up something with the opposition talking about smell and how bad it is. Majority of the time, the wind is blowing to the east. Very, I get the cannabis smells, and yes, you can smell it in the morning, but I would like to bring up that I don't think that he should be able to bring smell into this when he himself is growing his own allowed six plants. So how can he tell that it's not smell from his plants or smell from ours? And, and adjacent to what Sarah Cato said about, and Ashley Cato, her property and where her tenants live in Association Hard Grove, they bought that property after we had already developed our cannabis farm. So they knew that farm was there when they purchased that property. We were already in the process of it. And him saying that they did not know anything about our cannabis grow, they had toured our property with Carrie, the other applicant, so has Ashley and Kyle, they have all been there. They knew about it. And specifically that had their rental house, they knew that. And they asked us if we wanted to rent it from them when they purchased it. So they did know about all of this. So I just wanted to bring that up. And yes, I know smell is bad, but they have been complaining about the smell for over a month. My plant just started flowering two weeks ago, and that's when smell comes on, is in flower. It's just starting to have a scent now. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, do you have any further questions of the applicant or any member of the public who has commented before we close the public hearing portion?
No.
Okay. So closing the public hearing portion, bringing this back to the commissioners for discussion. Where would you guys like to start?
No, let's go. Isn't that where I'm at? It's, it's clear these applicants were entitled to and did get a permit for one cultivation site on this 40-acre parcel now zoned RA, because that's what the ordinance allows. That was a judgment of the county. It's equally clear that they're not entitled to another one, another co-locating site with the RA zoning. Again, that was a judgment of the county. The EIR and the addendum didn't consider any specific sites, their zoning, or anything else about them. This application is for a specific site with particular neighbors, topography, winds, road conditions, and the rest of it. And I still think it's clear this is a discretionary exercise for the planning commission to make its recommendation to the board, who will have the ultimate decision. And I do not think this application should be approved. I think we ought to consider the specifics of this situation that no EIR ever did. First is the odor issue, and to me, that's a major one. There's three or four residences to the west and south. Some are really close to the property line. They're somewhere between 500 and 900 feet away. These odors can be strong, and they can be carried quite a distance by the wind. And I, I happen to know that because I've seen cannabis grows in Salt Spring Valley, and they can carry half a mile. And that's going to be unavoidable if the county lets this happen. And of course, they do have a right to an acre. There are some odors already there, but doubling the size of the canopy seems to me, on this record, based on what the EIR says, in common sense, is going to double, maybe some more, maybe some less, the, the odors that are going to be traveling to these residences. And, you know, the environmental impact report says the occurrence severity of odors under the ordinance then proposed depends on numerous factors, including the nature, frequency, and intensity of the odor sources, wind speed and direction, proximity to off-site receptors, and sensitivity of exposed receptors. Says the potential odors will depend on the size of the cannabis operation, that's what we're dealing with, receptors, strain of cannabis, presence of nearby vegetation, and topographic and atmospheric conditions. And we've heard what's happening out there now. Generally, as I said earlier, the, the larger the canopy area, the greater the potential for odor, to be evident. So these, these neighbors are now having a considerable impact now. They've told us what it is, and this is, it's, it's going to get worse if this is approved. The second is a traffic issue, which may or may not be a major issue. I think it's perfectly clear the access roads, the public roads to this property, they're windy, they're steep, they have a lot of curves, and they're really narrow. There will be some increase in employee traffic. It's hard to say how much, but there'll be some. And, I mean, you can say, I suppose, that concentrating the traffic here will mean less traffic overall in the county. That may be true, but that doesn't answer the question as to what's going to happen here. And I think that's what we're concerned about. And the third problem I have is the EIR issue. The EIR did not address rezoning at all. It is not mentioned in there. The ordinance provision that said, yes, you can apply to rezone, came into the ordinance after the EIR was done. It didn't exist when the EIR was done. So this invitation to rezone was never considered county-wise or otherwise. The increase in size from one acre to two acres on a parcel, this is the co-location, it didn't exist either when the EIR was prepared. The addendum did mention the co-location and the increase from a half an acre to one acre, but only as to the county-wide effects. And it didn't analyze the co-location at all. What effect will two acres have on somebody downwind as opposed to one? The ordinance has finally passed and did allow for rezoning and did allow for co-location, but the environmental documents didn't. So, you know, here we're faced with a potential for odor from two acres of cannabis on a single parcel, where the maximum under the ordinance analyzed by the EIR was a half an The addendum recognized it would come up to one acre, but it only analyzed those effects county-wide. It didn't analyze what happens when you go from a half an acre to an acre, to people who are there in a vicinity. And now we're up to two, four times. So I think this project will substantially worsen the significant effects from odor from the levels addressed in the EIR and the addendum. I think that four times the impact is a substantial worsening. It's four times within the EIR, double the amount mentioned in the addendum. So I don't think that the existing EIR and the addendum do analyze this project adequately. I think a lot's been done today to bring out what's happening and what might happen in the future, but not in the environmental document. And, you know, putting aside the EIR and the technical issues here, the bottom line to me is, how does a decision here affect people specifically in this place under this, these conditions? Should the, should the county, at this point, public planning commission, on a recommendation basis, is tasked with coming up with something, should it exercise its discretion to grant a zoning amendment that's, that's going to allow the applicants to make more money, because otherwise he would be asking for it? It may carry with it a slight increase in jobs, but there are costs involved in this. And the costs are, are being borne by the neighbors downwind who do object to this. They say these odors are severe and objectionable, and they're, it would just get worse. And that cost, you know, is a cost to their quality of life, and it's a cost to the diminution of value of their property. And my, my view is one acre's enough. There's plenty of room to put another acre or even more than that if they want. It does not affect the neighbors the way this will. And that's where I'm at.
I think it's important to keep in mind that the EIR, first, I would like to say, I think odors are a very, a very significant factor, which of course the EIR recognized. I don't enjoy odors of cannabis. But I think we need to look at the, at the history here. The EIR was considering county-wide all the various situations, and that, under the conditions existing at the time the basic EIR was passed, was, or was considering, plots could be a lot closer than these plots would be to the particular neighbors involved. The EIR took all factors, as Commissioner Wooster stated, the size, the wind factor, this sort of thing, took all those factors into consideration, and including the quality of life of the neighbors. And they found, the Board of Supervisors found that the odor effect was significant and unavoidable. And that's, that in itself is very significant. But the Board of Supervisors then stated that there were overriding considerations that, that overrode the effects, the significant but unavoidable effects of the odor. Here, it isn't that we're just relying upon the EIR. We have an initial study negative declaration that did properly analyze whether the effects from this particular grow would be more significant than the effects that the EIR was considering. And the, the conclusion was, no, it, they weren't. This is the sort of thing that the Board of Supervisors was considering when they decided that the odors were significant, unavoidable, but that there were overriding considerations for the county to go ahead. So we don't just have the EIR. And by the way, as pointed out by Commissioner Wooster, the addendum to the EIR does speak about the co-location. And at that point, the, the addendum of the possibility of rezoning was certainly in existence in the ordinance. So the Board of Supervisors in approving the addendum were aware of, of these factors. The odors, while very significant, are basically seasonal. I mean, the, the deleterious effects of the odors are a seasonal thing. And it's open to question whether doubling the size of the plot would double the amount of odors. I admit that there's a common sense assumption that it would significantly increase, but we don't, we don't have anything on the record that shows that. As to the opponent claims that there had to be an EIR for this project, in effect, there is. There's, there's the programmatic EIR, and then there's the, the document that was prepared for this application, the initial study negative declaration document, that considered whether the conclusions under the EIR were applicable here. Now, we do have discretion to recommend against this zoning amendment. But I think in order to do that, we necessarily have to indicate to the Board of Supervisors that the statement of overriding consideration needs to be itself reconsidered. I think there's, there's, I'm convinced from the initial study negative declaration that these, I think, very significant odor effects that might occur from the additional acre is that the initial study indicates, and I, I accept this, that it is not more significant than the significant and unavoidable effects county-wide from the, that, that the Board has already recognized. So it seems to me that if, unless we want the county to change its policy, we should approve this rezoning application.
There's, this is really a difficult one, I think, because there's so many factors to consider here. I can tell you, I believe that the ordinance itself, the cannabis ordinance, ordinance is flawed. I don't believe that it should have ever, it wasn't truly considered the effects on our citizens that live in Calaveras County. I happen to live next to a grow. It does adversely affect me. I have a business, a summer camp for kids, and I have a venue for weddings, and it definitely affects me. The, the ordinance should not have been approved. It should have been indoor grows. That doesn't affect people because they can use filtration. The fact remains that they did approve it. And as much as I don't like the fact that they're not growing indoors, it needs to be changed. I don't think that that's what we're here to do today. The fact that all the surrounding properties are already A1 suggests to me that having it become A1 should not necessarily not be allowed. I mean, this is really a tricky one, because I, I can empathize with the people that live next door to it, because I live next door to it. But that would be a subjective opinion, not an objective opinion. And I think I was hired to be objective, not subjective. There are definitely many factors considered. The water is one of them. I know that my neighbor's wells are going dry around me, and that's something that should have been considered in the ordinance also. But apparently, I know that the county doesn't have a lot of money, and I think that that was the highest consideration that they used. And... in allowing this to happen. And it seems like that is the, you know, the determining factor moving forward. But it certainly should be, I think, reconsidered, although it's a little late in the game. You know, for me, it feels like, you know, the ordinance is not proper. But this particular instance, it seems to I'm finding it difficult to not want to approve the A1 designation just based on the fact that the ordinance is what it is. So that's kind of where I'm at with that.
I wasn't here when everything else was put in, or when these three properties were combined into one. It's been pointed out that there are things under the A1 zoning that would not be a good business here. For instance, a dairy that could have an impact on also smell and usage of water and that type of thing. And I think that's why it was probably originally zoned as an RA location for residential, because there wasn't a lot of productive use for this type of land. I commend the applicants for wanting to make good use of this land. I also feel horrible for those who have rebuilt their homes in something that was destroyed by fire. And now many of those properties are being used for a different use than what was originally intended. And so a lot of people's homes and lives are changing because of that. I don't believe that this particular area would support the commercial aspect of what the A1 zoning ordinance is asking for. The roads up there are not meant for it. I'm not looking at it as a grow or any of that. To me, that's not what's in front of me right now. It's based on the way it is. I think that it should remain the way that it is as an RA zoning designation.
I have one more question. So there's a finite amount of permits allowed, right? Is this a consolidation of the permits? Or is it two separate permits to grow cannabis? Are we going to consolidate the location?
No, they remain two separate.
Okay. So for me, I'm kind of also looking at it as we could find ourselves doing this one more time in a different area and affecting even more people. And while I do not like that it is affecting anybody, if it's a consolidation of the location of two permits, I see a benefit there as well. And a pretty significant one, because it is affecting these three people. And I feel terrible that it is. I don't like it. But the fact that it does consolidate the location of two permits, I think, is a benefit also. So that's something I needed clarified. Because if it enabled them to do a larger grow without eliminating the extra permit, I would say, heck, no, I'm not for that at all. But the fact that it does consolidate two permits, I do think that that is a factor to consider as well.
Well, I think all my fellow commissioners have spoken to a lot of my concerns. I think if I was just looking at this on a map, I would say, yeah, we should rezone that A1. It's been merged. It's a big parcel. It's what everything else in the area is. There's the potential for any of those uses on any of those parcels. So that's one thing. And then, secondly, it could remain RA. They could do a parcel split and return it to two 20-acre parcels and request a second permit on a second parcel. And they have the room to stay 150 feet from the property boundaries. But it would actually likely, from what I can tell looking at the aerials, push that second grow actually closer to the residences. So could potentially have a more significant impact on them. I am I mean, I feel for these people who rebuilt their homes or moved there after the fire and are now faced with these new challenges. I'm familiar with that area. When I first moved to the county more than 40 years ago, actually lived out in Mount Ranbury. Familiar with the whiskey slide area. And I can tell you there have been grows out there long before any cannabis ordinance existed. And the fire definitely exposed all of that. And any odors could be experienced right then. So I, despite all my concerns for the neighbors, I think that the cannabis ordinance anticipated exactly this kind of situation. And they talked about colocation because of the benefits, both environmental and efficiency. I just see this as better than the alternatives. And I, from everything I've read and seen, the applicants are responsible people. And I expect them to continue to be responsible growers. So I am in favor of recommending both adoption of the negative declaration and recommendation of the zone change to the Board of Supervisors. Given the situation, I think we'll poll the commissioners so everybody's on record with their concerns. And is there anything, Gabriel or Julie? Would you like to re, we should actually talk about the amended resolution and make sure there's no
I was just going to say, it'll go, you know, for appealing, this would only have been appealable if the commission were to vote to deny it. It would be appealable. It doesn't need an appeal if it's approved, because it still requires getting a hearing in front of the Board of Supervisors.
Right. So Gabriel, would you like to give us the official recommendation? And do any of the commissioners have any comments on the resolution that we need to discuss, the amended one?
Do you want those now or after Gabriel?
Gabriel, did you have any comments on the resolution, or should we?
No, Madam Chair. I think we can go ahead and
Then let's hear the commissioners' comments.
Major, major comments.
I know, I can see it.
There's a parentheses missing in the title. Shocking. Last line of the title after the word minimum needs to have a closed parenthesis. I do have some that are more interesting than that. Page three of six. The paragraph that starts with the preparation of initial study. You're going down about five lines why there's the EIR comma, but that comma should be a period.
I'm sorry, where are you? I'm trying to catch up and put my red line.
Oh, okay, page three. The paragraph that starts the preparation of initial study. The end of the second sentence currently has a comma instead of a period. Then at the end of the, see, so page five of six, the last sentence above, or the last two sentences above the approved by the planning commission should be eliminated. Talking, we're in a section that's talking about zoning amendment is consistent with neighboring and adjacent land uses and zoning. And as pointed out by the planning director, reference to the Oak Ridge subdivision is not adjacent or near. So just cancel out those two sentences.
So actually, it's not RR either. It's the rural residence. It's RA and A1 zone parcels, yeah.
Where's that?
Thank you. The very last sentence. But you've already got that. Okay. Are there any other comments on the resolution before we hear the recommendation?
Oh, I do have another comment. That's the
You took what you asked.
Exhibit A doesn't tell us anything. It doesn't say which parcel is under consideration. There's no annotations on that. And it doesn't even indicate that what timeframe this exhibit exhibits. I mean, it's showing the parcels before they were combined.
Right, before they were merged.
So it means
A little update on Exhibit A. All right.
That the planning commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors Oh, I'm sorry. Stop's recommendation is as follows. That the planning commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors the adoption of negative declaration 2021-055. Find the proposed project to be a later activity within the scope of the October 22, 2019 Cannabis Program EIR and approve zoning amendment 2021-055 to change the zoning designation of a 41-acre parcel from RA 20 residential agriculture 20-acre minimum to A1 general agriculture 20-acre minimum for whiskey flight, whiskey slide farms.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisk.
I don't know whether to say I deny or just so I am no. Thank you. Commissioner Parker.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Commissioner Plotnick, aye. So the resolution is approved 3-2. Do we need a motion? Oh, yeah, we did it without a motion. Thank you again. That's okay. Yes, do we have a motion?
I move we adopt the resolution as amended and with the exhibit as it will be.
Do we have a second? I'm the chair.
I will second the motion on this.
Now, we have a motion and a second, so one more time. Commissioner Fisk.
No.
Commissioner Parker.
Aye.
Commissioner Wooster.
No.
Commissioner Lattish.
Aye.
Commissioner Plotnick, aye. Sorry about that, guys. You're on to the next phase.
Oh, now we're going to encourage the county to enter the agreements. I don't know if that fits into our
Would the commissioners like to consider a recommendation to the board that we create some sort of recorded limitation on the commercial agricultural uses on this parcel to preclude like a turkey farm or hog farm?
Limited to what's included in the zoning.
In the zoning. I'm personally not concerned. It's so hilly. I can't imagine anybody wanting to do anything.
Yeah, all of all, I'm thinking it would delay some of the concerns of the neighbors.
I didn't hear them concerned about turkey farms.
I did.
I didn't hear any real concerns about turkey. They don't want the cannabis there is what I'm guessing.
That's the main point. Okay, I would just hopefully give the
That's just my opinion.
So Commissioner Fisk, would you like to see something added?
If, no. I mean, it would have been done through the resolution and it would have been done by denying this. The zoning is what it is.
Okay. So it doesn't appear that there's any
I'm not concerned about it.
I saw his head moving and his eyes and his world twitching. So we're going to move on to our next item, which is informational items, which we don't have any. And are there any commissioner reports? I got nothing. Planning Director report.
None, Madam Chair. However, I did mention at our last planning commission meeting of a county commissioners' conference that is happening in Pleasanton, I think. And this is something, I'm going to have a flyer. We should have had it. We'll have a flyer in your package for the next planning commission meeting just advising you of the location and events being planned. And if you have any desires or interests to attend, then we need to get you registered so that we can pay for accommodations to that effect. I don't know if it's, you know, it's of any interest to anyone, but it is recommended for newly appointed planning commissioners because it could be a learning experience to be with other commissioners and talk about some of the issues that are challenging to each jurisdiction. So I'll have that in front of you next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we are adjourned at 12:14. Thank you, everybody.